Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President is absent for real call.
I was going to wish the City of Omaha happy 166th birthday in my comments today since the city's birthday is actually this Thursday, which is also Groundhog's Day. But the last 18 hours have been taxing for our first responders and our citizens. Last evening, two officers responded to a call of an active burglary in progress at about 50 Third and Center. And in the course of the confrontation, two officers were shot and wounded. I'm glad to say that neither one of them appeared to be life sustaining injuries. In fact, one of the officers was released from the hospital last night and the other, I believe, is still in there and may have some wounds that require some surgery. But then just within the last couple of hours, maybe some of you have heard and some of you haven't, but our first responders were again asked to respond to a life threatening situation. And I believe it was officially called an active shooter at the target at 178th and Center. And from the preliminary information I have received, no officers were injured. And as importantly, no citizens were injured as well. But our first responders did respond to the situation and the perpetrator is deceased. We ask a lot of our first responders and rely on their professionalism and the delivery of those services. And I truly believe we have a very professional police department. And we continue to work on finding ways to better train and equip those officers, including, for example, responding to mental health situations. But at the end of the day, I have confidence in Chief Schmodder and his staff and the men and women of OPD who continue to put their lives on the line every day for the protection of our citizens. And they do so in an accountable and professional manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. I appreciate you addressing those issues. I do think they're very important, too. And I did just come from the mayor's office and had a briefing from Chief Schmodder, which is why it's a little bit late, but your representation of that incident is accurate. And we're pleased that, and fortunate, there were no further incidents at the target. And should feel good about the police response we had in that respect. And also reports on Officer's landing and more, they are doing well from last night. And I believe one of them is released from the hospital already. And maybe the last thing I would just add before we get into our normal course of business here is some observations, too, about last week and the situation in Memphis. I felt our police chief responded well and I appreciated his comments that that can't be tolerated in Memphis and it can't be tolerated in Omaha and it can't be tolerated anywhere. And if you saw, like I did, the interview with the city council president in Memphis, Martavius Jones, you could just feel the devastation in his remarks. And I think that's a feeling we all felt about it and certainly a devastating feeling you'd have if that was done or it had occurred in your city. So I think it was important to communicate that as well. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. It was continued from last week. Are any proponents, please? Or sorry, the public hearing is closed, I believe, right? So today it's just the vote on number six. Ms. Johnson, did you have any remarks?
Yes, I did. Your name escapes me for right now. Did you come up? The owner of the establishment? Hi, your name and address, please?
Myron Menfield, 6536 Reed Street.
All right. Thank you, Myron. I just wanted to come up and acknowledge you and your generosity and understanding the need to create unity in our community. And I really appreciate you agreeing to lay over the vote on this to allow this information to be shared with other members in District Two. I move that we go ahead and approve the recommendation for the liquor license.
Motion in a second. Mr. Harding?
I'm not going to comment. Well, actually, I'll just say, I'm not going to comment other than I had an occasion to talk to Myron before the meeting started. And I'm glad to, as I told him, I was glad to support him last week and I'm even more glad to support him today.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Mr. President. Also, last week, Myron, I was prepared to support it last week, but you were good enough to allow it to be laid over. I just wanted to briefly remark that your commitment to pedestrian safety into the neighborhood, that spoke volumes to me last week. So I wish you the best of luck going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Item seven to consider a class C liquor license for the fat putter located at 111 North 10th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. President.
Oh, Mr. Kelly.
Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, on behalf of the applicant. As the name would infer, this is an indoor putting facility that would be in the capital district and we would ask for your approval.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton?
Was an indoor mini golf. I got really excited. I just love indoor mini golf, unlike the other members of my family that can play 18 holes outside. That's not really my talent. So tell them, I'm so glad that we're getting a new indoor mini golf facility in Omaha.
Thank you.
Is that a motion? Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item eight to consider a class I liquor license for Maharaja Indian Cuisine located at 617 North 114th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. We have the proponent by Zoom as well. Get you off mute here in a second. Want to try your name and address for the record there? Okay.
My name is Sri Devi. My address is 5008 South 176th Avenue.
Thank you. And here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
All right. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item nine to consider a class K liquor license for Skybox Grill and Bar located at 6720 South 168th Street, Suite 5.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please. Do we have the applicant for number nine here? Yeah, come on down.
Hi, Holly Purcell, 21412 Hickory Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Items 10 through 15 can be considered together for a Lincoln station located northwest of 182nd Street and Honeysuckle Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees communication in opposition. Items 10 and 11, ordinance is to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R6 District. Item 12, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district. Items 13 and 14, resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 10 through 15 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 11440 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant, 192 Honeysuckle LLC. This property, obviously, final rezoning and final plat of this property. I think I can officially say that I have been working on this project for about four and a half to five years. This is a planning department and public works dream project in the sense that it has everything that you could possibly want. But this is 185 units, market rate, 387 parking spaces. Right on the corner, this is 192nd. This is Honeysuckle. For those of you familiar with Old Lincoln Highway, it's right there with this project. The fun part about it was you have an interceptor sewer running through here with a 75-foot setback. You have wetlands coming through the middle of it. You have a 3:1 plus 50 with that channel. You have a trail, pedestrian trail going through here. And you have a decommissioned wastewater plant to the west of it. So it's been fun. I'm glad that we are finally here. We're here for any questions and we appreciate your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, no further lights, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone property located at 15469 Summerwood Drive from R4 District to R435 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote today are today on number 16. Proponents, please.
I'm the applicant.
All right, please.
Shiloh Jorgensen, 15469 Summerwood Drive.
Thank you. Just here to answer questions?
Yeah.
All right. Any other proponents on number 16? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 17, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 3009 and 3011 South 84th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Dale Williams. I live at 9257 Plattview Road in Papillion. And if you have any questions about the project at all?
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 18, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located southeast of 204th and Ward Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Rob Duvall with shimmer to answer any questions on the project.
Thank you. And your address, too?
1044 North 115th Street, Suite 300.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 19, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the PUD overlay district located southwest of 72nd and Seward Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. This item's in my district and I'm supportive of what they're doing here. It just updates what I think is a current sign on the side of their building. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 20, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 3 overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 10805, 10815 and 10825 Old Mill Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 21, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 8505 North 30th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Streason, as long as you're here, I just had a question in pre-council that I think I'd answered, but I'll obviously ask it of you as well. So this is, as you know, currently a vacant lot in the middle of the Florence Business District. It's been tough to maintain and rebuild since there was a fire there several years ago. And I was in Florence just last night and I see it is clean now, but still vacant. So what this will do is just adopt the ACI overlay district to that property. And Planning did share with me this morning some updated elevations of what will come in next that I think are related to the building permit. But do you want to talk about the status of the rebuild project and what happens next?
Yeah, I think he's got a conditional use permit approved from the planning board. Long rectangular brick building. I think these guys are automotive enthusiasts and they plan on storing automotive cars in there, nice cars and so forth. So it'll be probably very little impact. They'll either be up there working on things or nothing will be going on.
That's what it looked like to me, too. I think it was a maximum of eight cars and all indoors. And I think the facade looked like it was characteristic of the historic business district there, which I appreciate. Any idea in terms of timeline?
I don't have any idea on that. There's no parking outside, by the way. Everything will be inside, so I think it'll fit in good with the neighborhood. And knowing this builder, it'll likely be sometime this season, this construction season coming up.
Okay. I'm supportive of this today and maybe you can just update me along the way about the timing of that.
I'll pass that along.
Okay, thank you. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Items 22 and 23 can be considered together for property located southeast of 210th Avenue and I Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 22, an ordinance to rezone this property from R5 District to R6 District. Item 23, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district for this property.
Public hearing and vote on number 22 and 23 are today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Bagley.
Yeah, I'm not really the applicant. Jerry Sluski is. So I'm just here if there's any questions, the owners.
All right, thank you. Looks like we have somebody here who is also going to speak. Go ahead.
Yes, Deborah Klein for Sluski LP, the applicant, just here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 24 and 25 can be considered together for property located at 2505 North 24th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 24, an ordinance to rezone this property from LA District to MBD District. Item 25, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items 24 and 25 are today. Proponents, please.
Ashley Kuhn, here on behalf of the applicant, 4616 Dodge Street, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion for the opponent.
All second. No further lights, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 26, a resolution to approve the Grover Street Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 7016 Grover Street in an amount up to $517,672.
Public hearing and vote on number 26 is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. Can I get an overhead place? The project is the Grover Street TIF project located at 72nd and Grover Street. It's a vacant parcel as part of the former Cocoa Keys Ramada Insight. The project involves new construction of a two-story medical building, medical office building, dental office, to be specific, about 7,560 square feet. Building will be on its own parcel, but it's going to be built zero online, connecting with the existing building, existing dental office out in that corner. And that's the existing new image dentistry building. The developer is Dudzinski Properties LLC, managed by Dr. Bernard Dudzinski. This project, about a $2.8 million project, requesting $517,672 in TIF support. Meets the criteria of our TIF program, complies with the master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Thank you, Mr. President. Robert Griffith, 11440 West Center Road, here as well on behalf of the applicant. Thank you again to Don and the planning department with their help in putting this together. I just briefly add, there's about $41,000 worth of public improvements that go along with this, including sidewalks, street scaping, utilities, things of that nature. And the plan initially for this new side of the building will be a pediatric dentistry because the doctor has identified that as a need in the area and so that's the initial plan. So I have to ask to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents on number 26?
Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'd like to support this because I have experience as a dental technician in Omaha. And I understand that as the city grows, these kinds of services are going to be needed, quality services. So this project is going to employ dental technicians as well as the professionals within the business, with the dentist and its, the managing staff. So that's my support because as the city grows, we need basic services. However, I have a problem with the TIF. This is not a lot of money, so actually I don't have a problem with the TIF financing of $517,000. I do have a problem with a timeframe, which I actually don't know how long they're going to take to repay, but probably like 15 years. And during that time, public bodies like the school districts and the Douglas County will be waiting for an increase in their budget based on this project. So that is my opposition, that it's going to take a long time before the school districts and the county receive the benefits of this project. Okay?
Thank you.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is your testimony complete?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm opposed to this because I don't see anything blighted about that area. There's an awful lot of development for that area that's been passed here in recent MH, I don't know what that is. That stands for Marriott, maybe. Started out as a very small thing to be a hotel supply. Now there's all kinds of different things going in there. But as I drove down here today, down Hamilton Street from Saddle Creek East, I think that area is more blighted or severely blighted than this area on Grover. And I would think some of those people would like TIF financing to rebuild their house, maybe a church, a social club on the corner of 30th and Hamilton. But I guess somebody didn't tell them to get down here and apply for it. But I read through the documents and this is a dentistry building. So he files a corporate name so he can come down here and get TIF financing to build a bigger dentistry office? I don't think that's really quite fair to people in North Omaha and North 30th Street, 30th and Hamilton, maybe even on the east side of the west side of the interstate between Dodge and coming and along coming. Not fair to them, is it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items 27 through 33 were held on January 24th. Is there a motion? Motion in a second, no further lights, roll call.
Plermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 34 through 43 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And for council members knowledge, the applicant for number 34 is available by Zoom.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I read through the documents on your website. I don't see anything in there about where the city gets the money for this. And it doesn't say that it's through the Omaha Land Bank.
What number are you referring to, Larry?
40.
Okay.
But a real estate purchase. Makes me kind of wonder, well, how does the city do that? And how does it affect me? $890,000 and clear out on 214th. City must have bought that recently because he probably wouldn't think that far ahead not too long ago. That would never be developed out there. But just maybe a little more transparency for the citizens to understand where the money came from or where it's going to come from. Because if it's coming from my property taxes, I'm definitely opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Heard the city is selling the ground in item 40.
Thank you. Nope. No further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 44, in ordinance to acquire private property for the 205th Street and Cumberland Drive intersection improvements.
Public hearing on number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 45, in ordinance to approve the interlocal agreement with the City of Ralston for Highway 85.
Public hearing on number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 46, in ordinance to approve a non-exclusive public row license agreement with Ubiquity Nebraska LLC for a period of 10 years.
Public hearing on number 46 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Sunny Nunez. I'm at 4200 West 115th Street in Leewood, Kansas, 66211. Here for Ubiquity and just here to answer any questions if anybody has any regarding the project or the proposal.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 47, in ordinance to transfer a permanent water main easement and land to MUD for city-owned property located in Elmwood Park.
Public hearing on number 47 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 48, in ordinance to approve an amendment to the agreement with Front Porch Investments to administer City of Omaha ARPA funds in the amount of $20 million.
Public hearing on number 48 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Eva Roberts with Front Porch Investments, 1120 South 101st Street, here in support of the ordinance. As you know, we've updated the work plan to reflect new treasury guidance, which now allows use of ARPA for longer-term loans. The ability to use these ARPA funds for long-term revolving loans was actually the preference in our original discussions with the city. And so this welcome change will allow ARPA funds to be invested in long-term loans, which are especially critical now given rising interest rates that could slow the pace of development and create additional affordability challenges. The proposed revolving loan long-term product will be more flexible, more sustainable, and keep these funds in our community to support affordable housing well into the future. Thank you. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I oppose to this because I think it's pushing us closer and closer to federal control of our local government and our property taxes. We're running to get the rest of the federal money that's left in the treasury. $20 million, not just from me, but from taxpayers across the country. This was not intended by the founding fathers. If we need this many affordable houses and mixed-use houses and revitalization of neighborhoods because it's, I've had my house for 60 years or better. Why not just say so and get some donors to donate the money instead of going to the federal government? You're supposed to be a separate government, not dependent on the federal government. When that money dries up, what's going to happen to these people that can't pay that rent, that subsidized housing any longer? Who's going to pay that then? Who are you going to ask? Let's stay away from socialism. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I oppose this because the guidelines provided by the treasury on ARPA funds have always been nebulous. And then the state of Nebraska and the City of Omaha have not done a good job at explaining what the guidelines are on how to, who can receive ARPA funding. So I think this item needs a rationale and a specific reason that corresponds to guidelines from the treasury or the state of Nebraska or from the mayor as to why these funds are being reallocated. It's been years and it has been nebulous, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, is your light on?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. President. Eva, a couple of quick questions. How are you doing today?
Great, thank you.
We had a discussion in pre-council this morning. So the $20 million of these ARPA funds are also going to be leveraged by $20 million from private funds. Can you touch on that a little bit for us?
Sure. The model at Front Porch has always been public-private partnership. And the arrangement with the city in terms of the Development and Preservation Fund was $20 million private match with the $20 million in ARPA, and that will not change.
And Councilmember Harding this morning also spoke about in pre-council about the Section 108 HUD, additional $20 million. Can you touch on that a little bit for us?
I understand that the city is also going after applying for federal funds to do additional affordable housing development through the Section 108 program.
Okay, so that, if I'm doing fuzzy math, that's 20, 20, and 20, so that's $60 million.
Correct.
Okay. And can you touch briefly on also, what are the uses of these funds that we're talking about here today so people can understand?
Absolutely. The Development and Preservation Fund involves construction of new affordable housing, preservation of existing affordable housing, which is really essential to meeting the need. We can't build fast enough to close the gap. And so preserving the naturally occurring affordable housing that we have citywide is also a part of this. And in the long run, these funds could also be used toward mortgages in the future.
And that's lower-interest loans, correct?
Correct. Very low-interest loans, very appealing in this inflation environment.
That great point to make, because I think that's important here, obviously. As you said, with fluctuating, rising inflation, these are low-interest rates.
Very low-interest rates for nonprofit and for-profit developers as well.
That are already pensioned as much as they can as far as pennies together, so this is a great help to the nonprofits.
Agreed. And it's also an incentive for the for-profit developers to work in affordable housing.
And again, that's a public-private partnership you were talking about a few minutes ago.
Absolutely.
And the last question I got, these have to be expanded by New Year's Eve of 2026, correct?
That was the original guidance, which is why we were originally looking at short-term loans. But the new guidance is going to allow this to go beyond and continue to circulate in the community.
Okay, thanks, Eva.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Oh, thank you. And I just wanted to note, we actually have already passed this, these funds. This was already voted on previously. All we're doing is voting to add the new, which, Luis, I'll agree with you. The federal government likes to change their regulations a lot. We actually had to hire a Deloitte in order to make sure we're following the federal guidelines. And we do, that's what we do. We rely on the experts. So what this is doing is broadening the ability to extend this to long-term low-interest loans.
Correct. The only change is the length of the term of the loans. So rather than 18 to 24 months, they could be 18-year loans and continue to revolve in our community in perpetuity.
So it actually makes it better. But again, if we voted this down, we already have it passed. We're just extending the terms because the treasury issued some extensions literally the day after we passed this, correct?
That's correct.
So we're just adding some language to this.
Yes, and it was in response to the development community saying that this tool would be much more effective in building more homes.
And I think more sustainable as well. I mean, when you lengthen it out, this isn't something you have to dump money in. This is something that'll be sustainable because the loans will get paid back.
Right, and actually grows a little bit over time with that small interest.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Greg, I saw you come down. Was there anything you wanted to add? Great, thank you. There's no further lights. Adam Clerk?
Non-action items, items 49 through 62, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
I'll second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:40.